Good evening and grab a seat if you don't have one already. Welcome to our District Town Hall meeting. This is our meeting for the central part of our City Council District. Some of you may recall that we do district-wide town hall meetings and then we try to do four neighborhood town hall meetings, one in each quadrant of our district each year. So we have sort of Linda Vista and then we have San Rafael and then we have South Orange Grove and then this is sort of what we call the central part of our of our district. The district is very widespread and varied and diverse. You know, I often tell people it's kind of like a T turned on its side. So we have all of West Pasadena and then the chunk, the bottom of the T, if you will, that would stick out from left to right is the part that comes through the middle part of Pasadena. We have most of Old Pasadena, we have Huntington Hospital, we have the Playhouse and the Convention Center where we find ourselves tonight. And so never a shortage of work or issues and a quite, again, diverse population within the district in terms of the needs of someone, say, up in Linda Vista versus somebody that lives across the street from this location versus somebody maybe on South Orange Grove or what have you. So obviously, it's an honor to represent all of those folks. I have a really esteemed panel here tonight. We wanted the top people in their fields to be here tonight. Those people weren't available, so we've got this panel. They've heard that so many times that they could see it coming, yeah. But before we do that, I want to give just some quick updates in terms of making sure you're aware of what we've been working on down at City Hall. We think we've driven the final nail through the coffin of the 710 freeway extension. So I think we should all give ourselves a hand for that. And of course, one never really knows in these things, but it now looks like with the environmental impact report and the recommendation of defunding the projects related to that and now Senator Portantino's bill for whom we're extremely grateful. And there was actually a press conference with Caltrans the other day which announced the legislation and the decision by Caltrans to no longer support the project. So it's very exciting. Of course, it now gives rise to a whole new set of challenges. How do we go about acquiring the property back from the state? What do we do with it when we have it? Those are good problems to have. How do we manage the through traffic that uses that corridor like it's a freeway now, as you all know, in terms of these formerly local streets? Then how do we assess and decide on and then pursue the projects that will be available to us through the funding that Metro and Caltrans and Measure R and some other sources will provide for us? One that's being talked about a lot already, you've probably seen, is the placement of the Gold Line at California and basically at Arroyo Parkway in California, not at grade. So the idea is that either an underpass would be built or an overpass would be built for the auto traffic and that would then, the thinking is, address the problems of delay and traffic congestion with that. And I've heard some people hearken back to the days of the no, I think then it was called no blag, no blue line at grade, which when I actually first came into office was kind of going pretty strong. And I remember vividly talking to Adam Schiff, who was also a fairly new elected official. He said, "Steve, if Pasadena insists on changing that part of the plan, you will not have the light rail. It's just already on a track," no pun intended, "that it will, it'll either be built like this or it won't be built. If you send it back to the drawing board, there are lots of other projects that'll rush in and grab those funds." And we were assured at the time, no present company, I don't think, made those assurances, but we were assured at the time that the train traffic would fit right within the 1,500 red light cycles every day. And I don't think any of us believed it, but not being traffic engineers, you know. So that, I think, would be a useful amenity which would create some other consequences in terms of what does that do to the appearance of our city? What does it do to the properties surrounding that? So we've got a lot of work to do on that. We've been dealing with the issues of the legalization of cannabis and state legislation and state rules now that are really pretty muscular in terms of forcing us to accommodate cannabis businesses in some way, shape, or form, at least to have our own, we're at least allowed to have our own sort of local regulation about it, but now that it's legal. I happen to think it's terrible public policy, probably just shows how old I'm getting, but nonetheless, that is the state law and, you know, we're obligated to comply with it. Measure I and J both passed the sales tax initiatives and City Manager is here and I tip my hat to him for bringing that, those measures forward and for their successful passage. So we will have, we hope, some additional sales tax revenue starting next year. And then on Measure J, it's a discretionary. The measure there was advisory-only, asking the voters, if we adopt Measure I and there is this additional sales tax increment, should the City of Pasadena use some portion, I think the measure even specified up to a third, of those funds to help Pasadena's public schools? Or I think the verb was to support the public schools. And it was really no more detail than that. So we've been grappling with, you know, what to do in that regard. Obviously, we all took note of the fact that there was a higher margin of success for Measure J than there was for Measure I, which basically means that not an insignificant number of people voted no on Measure I, the sales tax initiative itself, but they said, "If you do pass it, then I would support supporting the public schools." So clearly, there's strong, strong support for the public schools in our community, as I think there has been for years. And so that'll be an opportunity. My thing there, just so you know, is even in that capacity, in the face of a ballot initiative like that, if I'm going to collect money from constituents, I want to be accountable to the constituents for how those monies are spent, how those are managed. And that's the tricky thing, right? Because we can write a check to the school district, but then we really have no accountability for the prudent spending of those monies and the appropriate spending of those monies. So we are going to continue to talk about that and I think that's one that among the eight members of the council, there are nine opinions about this issue. But we'll come up with something that I think satisfies and pursues the desire of the voters and helps our schools and where we're also, I hope, prudent stewards of that, of those monies. So I should mention Anthony Portantino's District Representative. Dominic Corry is here. I mentioned Senator Portantino, so I want to welcome Dominic. Thank you for being here. Also, my friend Sandra Chung-Lau, the newly, still sort of newly-elected Pasadena Community College trustee from District One. Sandra is here. Say hello to her, if you haven't met her. And we have our public safety personnel here. The chief is up here, but of course, you know, he's in an office all day. So, but the men and women of the Police Department and the Fire Department are represented here by our friends, the lieutenant and the chief, so if we can welcome them and thank them for being here as well. So without further ado, and obviously, there are a lot more issues I could talk about. Never give a lawyer, politician, an open mic, but I really do want to get to our esteemed panel here. And I think what we'd like to address is the issues that relate to this central part of our City Council District and indeed, the central part of the city. And, you know, we've got some planning issues. So David Reyes, our esteemed Planning Director and Community Development Director, is here to talk about planning and the plans going forward. Fred Doc is here, our Director of Transportation. Also, these are all real, really top drawer public servants and managers in the public arena. So Fred can talk to us about transportation modalities and all sorts of things. Scooters and self-driving are out there and Fred and his staff are not uninformed about those things. Believe me, I speak regularly to them about what the future holds in this regard. For public safety, our interim Police Chief and applicant for permanent Chief, Police Chief, I think I'm allowed to mention, John Perez, who's been a friend for 20-plus years. And I think I first went on a ride-along with John when he was either a newly-appointed corporal or a patrol officer even, yeah. So we were both a lot faster and thinner then. And then Bill Wong will talk about an issue that I care a lot about, and that's the problems of the homeless. And, you know, when I travel around and I talk to people from other cities or I visit other cities, it's really striking how the problems that we're facing in Pasadena are really being experienced by cities all over the country and indeed, even all over the world. You know, they're, they're talking about things like homelessness and, and transportation and congestion and traffic and affordability. So Bill can certainly speak to that and what we're doing. And then Steve Mulheim, we invited the one non-city staffer, is the CEO of the Old Pasadena Management District. Steve Mulheim, he does a great job. He was there last night, as he is often on Monday nights. He stayed for a committee meeting and the full council meeting to make a very good point about, in that case, street vendors. There's new state legislation that's just come down very hurriedly that will require us to adopt a completely different regulatory scheme for street vendors. Where basically, we're now required to a much greater degree to permit and allow street vendors to operate throughout our city. And of course, the first thing we think about is food with those street vendors because we have a long experience and I think a pretty good program with regard to street vendors. We have a commissary that we helped establish that ensures cleanliness and certain health standards for food that's prepared and sold by street vendors, but also goes into things like, if you've ever visited New York, you know, there's a real issue with street vendors who are selling counterfeit goods, you know. So imagine in front of the Sunglass Hut, there's a table and someone is selling knockoff, you know, Gucci sunglasses for five bucks or T-shirts outside the Rose Bowl that, again, are counterfeit. So one comment that I contributed last night was that I definitely want to make sure that we pay attention to all these issues with whatever regulations we adopt in terms of trying to implement this state legislation. You know, I swear, the shortest amount of time measurable to man is the time it takes a newly-elected state legislator to forget what it's like being a local elected official. You know, that, the words "local control" immediately, except for Anthony, Dominic. But, you know, the words "local control" go right out of the vocabulary and we get these sort of unfunded, very, again, muscular, robust mandates sometimes. So we'll deal with it, but Steve is here and can talk about that or just overall the vision for Old Pasadena. So perhaps we can just start from my left, from David Reyes and on down, your right, working down the table. And then what I'd like to do, if we can, is hold the questions until everyone's done and that way, we will try to ensure equitable sharing of questions and answers. And I'm sure everyone here would love to take a few questions, so, David.
Thank you, Councilmember Madison, for inviting me to be here. It's a huge topic to talk about, the Central District, in terms of planning within the five minutes I've been given, but I'm going to do my very best. So one of the primary tenants of the city's general plan, and it goes back to 1995, is an agreement, if you will, between our City Council and the residents of the city to focus development in and around the city's central district and our commercial corridors, the north-south and east-west corridors, whether it be Colorado Boulevard, Lincoln, Lake, and others that are away from and serve to buffer the residential zones in the city, the single-family residential zones. And so the development pattern in the city really does focus, if you were to look at a map, in and around the corridors for mixed-use and commercial projects. And sort of at the, on the outside of it is this single-family zone that is comprised of a variety of fantastic and wonderful neighborhoods. Many of them have historic designations. Some of them are eligible to be designated to be historic. And I think that the city really prides itself on the preservation of what Pasadena stands for, whether we're talking about the aesthetics or some of the principles and morals it has. And so that leads and bleeds into the planning process. In 2015, the City Council adopted an updated general plan and vision for the city. I would say the largest change was really focused on allowing mixed-use projects in areas that don't currently allow any residential. Other than that, the densities that were promulgated by the plan are very similar to what they are today in terms of the allowed maximum development. And so we've started this process of implementing the general plan that was adopted and there are eight specific plans in the city. And so we're now updating all of those plans. And so with respect to the Central District, we think it's one of the most challenging and interesting plans because within it, it has like many plans, if you will. There's a civic center, there's a playhouse area, there's an Old Pasadena. These are areas that are uniquely important in and of themselves and need to be sort of protected and they could almost be many plans by themselves. And so we've begun the process, we've had eight community-wide meetings for each specific plan already. We've had three other citywide meetings and we're starting our second round of meetings. In addition to that community input, we've had stakeholder meetings. We've met individually with the Playhouse, with OPMD, with various property owners. We need, we're still continuing that work to do that outreach, so we're not done there. And we want to start the second round of community meetings for the Central District with the community probably in February. And we'll have dates up on our website. Our website is very up-to-date with respect to those dates. And I think it's important that those of you that are interested in the planning process attend those meetings because it's a, really an important place to voice your opinions. And so all those meetings that we've had, one of the things that I wanted to share with you is what we've heard so far. And it doesn't mean that it's over and there's not going to be other voices or issues that are brought up, but one of the things that we hear over and over again is the open space or lack thereof with respect to the amount of residential development that's coming to the Central District and how are we balancing that with, with open space amenities, whether we're talking about pocket parks or maybe revamping of new parks. And one of the things that we're looking to do with the, with the new plan is to look to private development to provide that. And so what we're looking at is having plazas and passeos and other maybe sort of corner amenities where it's just a little open space area that provides a reprieve or true amenities for folks that are either pedestrians, walking, or folks that are shopping in the area, just some sort of small open space idea. You've seen this, the City Council has recently purchased private property that was, I think, the former Banner Bank. They're talking about adding some park space there. And so we're looking at every opportunity, both at the City Council level in terms of purchasing new land for parks, which is very difficult, but also trying to be a little more creative and outside the box and require new development within its development to provide some open space for residents, for pedestrians that are more sort of community-oriented. And that's always a challenge and a balance when you're talking about having private developers do this and how do we get to do that? And I think we've got some ideas and we're going to be presenting those to the community. We think that that's a very important issue that we've heard and we completely agree with and want to respond to. Some of the other issues that we've heard are related to mobility and parking. The Central District with respect to parking, there's a lot of diverse and unique ideas. When we started, I won't steal Fred's thunder, but what I will say is that we've heard a variety of opinions and some of those opinions are, there's plenty of parking within the Central District, it's just not managed very well. And so how do we get to sort of manage it better and what can we do? And again, I'll let Fred talk about that, but that's a really important issue because we are within a transit area, right? We have access to different modes of transportation with respect to the Gold Line and buses. And I think that it's important to recognize that, recognize Lyft and Uber and the influence that they have, but also recognize that Southern Californians still have cars. And so we don't want to lose sight of, of that fact. And I think some communities that are a little more progressive are, Oakland, for instance, is saying, "Hey, no parking requirements. Whatever the market dictates, let it go." And I think that we're not quite there yet. We think we need to sort of be a little more thoughtful about the parking regulations, but we do want to take a hard look at what the required regulations are in the future because we do see that the required parking standards from our code, there's no demand to fill those, if you will. And so it'll be something that we continue to look at. The other really important issue is the historic resources. We heard this over and over again at all the community meetings and I know, I've been with the city six years and I come from the city of Beverly Hills and I'll just say that, that the approach to historic preservation in those two communities, much different. We really value not only the, the built environment, but we also respect the ancestry and sort of the people that lived in certain areas or houses and, and we think that those are of value in and of themselves. So what we heard the community say in the Central District is, "We have a national register district in Old Pasadena. We have buildings that are built and have been on the ground for hundreds of years and we need to respect those and new development should respect the context of the surrounding environment." And so that's kind of a challenge with respect to architecture, but it's something that not only is in the general plan with respect to council policy and direction, but it's what the community has continued to say over and over again. And so we're going to make sure that those standards are put into the, to the new plan and so that we have new development that does seek to respect the existing built environment. And that's sometimes subjective and a tough issue, but one that we're going to tackle. I also wanted to share just a little bit, Councilmember Madison was talking about local control and loss thereof by the state. And one of the main issues that, that we're going to be grappling with come 2019 is the, the state's response to the crisis that is lack of housing and supply in California. And so the state, whether folks believe it or not, the state has set forth a statement of fact, which is there is a housing crisis in California. There is not enough supply to meet the demand. And so going from there, they've established a variety of regulations, both proposed and some that are already enacted. The biggest one that we're tracking was, was formerly SB 827, a bill by Mr. Weiner out of San Francisco that was really going to take away the city's local control around transit stations. It was reintroduced this past Monday, today, yesterday, in fact. It is now SB 50. And we track it, it's now called the More Homes Act. And so we, we want to, we want to show state legislators that the City of Pasadena actually acknowledges that, yes, there's a housing issue and we have a responsibility to produce housing. And in fact, we do a fantastic job. Over the last five years, we've actually, under construction, either just about done or are already, have their CFOs, over 1,700 units in the last five years. Another 945 are approved but no building permit and another 2,600 that are currently in the pipeline. These numbers far exceed the required RIN allocation, the residential needs assessment that, that's put upon us. And we want to show state legislators that we actually are doing our fair share and we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be sort of trampled upon, if you will, with respect to new state legislation that is seeking to punish bad actors that don't produce housing. And so that's an issue that we're going to continue to grapple with and we may lose. We may lose. The state does what the state does and they're looking to establish rules and policies at this broad level across the state. And the fact is that one size does not fit all. And I think that this loss of local control, whether it's the sidewalk vending, whether it's a zoning issue, I think is a really important issue for the City of Pasadena because we care about the character of our neighborhoods, we care about the commercial districts. And I think I'm going to leave it at that. I'm getting the sign. A lot of issues to tackle, I'm going to turn it over to Fred.
Just if I could, thank you very much, David. Thank you. We're going to stick to the schedule, I'm told, on the agenda. So we'll go to Fred next and then go to John and then Bill and then Steve Mulheim. So sorry for that confusion. Fred, thank you, welcome.
Oh, thank you, Steve. Because I should push this back a little bit. Sorry, is that all right? Can you stand back here? I could be able to make up some time here since Mr. Madison told you all of the big things I was going to talk about. The 710 and what obviously going on with the Measure R dollars that Metro is voting on on Thursday morning about the grade separation of the California Boulevard. Obviously, there's a concept behind that. We can talk a little more about it if you have questions, but at the moment, there has been a look at the grade crossing by the, what used to be the Blue Line Authority, it's now the Foothill Extension Construction Authority, looked through. And they feel that it might be feasible to be able to grade-separate those two, the tracks at California by raising the tracks over California and then slightly depressing California Boulevard between Arroyo Parkway and Raymond. That would allow both of the intersections to retain at grade and would have very little effect on properties outside of the Arroyo Parkway-Raymond piece of California Boulevard. Obviously, the, the properties that are currently adjacent to California Boulevard on the east side of the tracks would be affected by this project and those are the things that have to still be developed and sorted out. There's also environmental clearance needed and all the bells and whistles that go with putting a project like that together. So while it's, it's, in concept is moving forward or should move forward if Metro approves it on Thursday, there will be quite a bit of work to be done and a lot of more information to be shared with everybody as that moves forward going on here. It's also possible that it's a project that Metro would manage and the city would participate in and we're still trying to, that will all get sorted out after the board has their action, whatever they take. Important to think about in that same context is there's still another $400 million of money in Measure R that's dedicated to the 710 corridor that Metro has not allocated yet. In the action that the board is expected to take on Thursday morning, they will allocate about $414 million. So an equivalent amount of that is still yet to be set out. And so we'll be working at staff level and with the council to make sure that the city's desires for what Pasadena shares, that needs to be in the corridor. And we feel that in that framework, that's when we'll be looking at what's possible within the Pasadena and St. John corridors to be able to reclaim those, how we can deal, hopefully, with the help of the Senator's bill of doing something with the stub to be able to manage traffic more effectively than the way it currently is. And those are all things that, that some of that $400 million could be used to accomplish going forward here. While we're still talking about funding, maybe just quickly, there is another source of funding that became available over the last year or so here when Measure M was approved. One of the pieces that's funded out of that is something called the subregional programs. And in that standpoint, we are then part of a subregion that includes the Arroyo Verdego, Burbank, Glendale, South Pasadena, locking out of Flint Ridge and a piece of LA County and La Cressena. We've had an allocation in the Measure M subregional component through the legislation that dedicates a particular portion of the sales tax proceeds to the subregion. And then we have to basically come up as a subregion with a five-year plan that is then presented to Metro. The Arroyo Verdego Board is going to be voting on Thursday afternoon, 4 to 6, on the first increment of that five-year program. It includes projects that we've had presented to the council, I think, in October, that were all drawn from previously-approved projects in Pasadena that were in the CIP. And those are being moved forward. There are only two categories of funding that are available to the Arroyo Verdego subregion right now. One of them is called Mobility, Connectivity, and Complete Streets. The other one is for Transit Capital. So we will expect to be seeing some allocations should Metro finally approve the Arroyo Verdego's proposals for the five-year program to add some more money into the Complete Streets program as well as into the Transit Capital. The Transit Capital, basically, will need to go for buses and facilities and can't be used for operations. The couple of projects are actually in District 6, one of them is anyway, it just doesn't happen to be in the Central District. It's a Complete Streets project on Avenue 64 that has been worked out with the neighborhood there several years ago and has been waiting for funding ever since. We're currently, while in District 6 here in Complete Streets, are in the process of moving into construction for the LIDA Complete Streets project that was going to put a median, that will put a median on LIDA as it comes down the hill. That was the first project that was done with the Complete Streets program and it happened to be in District 6 and has been waiting for funding now for several years. Avenue 64 is sort of the next one in line and that was how it wound up into the priority for the Complete Streets dollars that would come out of Measure M should they be approved. We'll know more about that once the board, Arroyo Verdego approves it and then once Metro moves it through their approval process. It's sort of these incremental steps we get to go through to find out just what we can, when the money will eventually be available. We have a few projects that I just wanted to update you on in terms of what is going on and that might affect you. We will be upgrading the traffic signal system around the Gold Line at grade crossings on Arroyo Parkway and Raymond, all of the signalized intersections at California and Del Mar, all the way from, actually, Raymond to Marengo. We'll be getting new updated traffic control software that should hopefully help with some of the delays that are going on. It won't eliminate them, but it will make them operate a little bit more efficiently until we can do something to, hopefully, the grade separation at California will make the biggest effect. We have a couple of street projects that we're working on directly with Public Works. One of them is Cardova. That's a project to really enhance the pedestrian crossing environment of the stretch between Lake and Arroyo, or, actually, Marengo, since the, that's the, the element there. We'll be essentially replacing the street pavement, we're putting in some curb extensions, some rain gardens, some green streets components there and we'll be providing for a bicycle lane along the corridor, similar to what's been done on the eastern end. There will be, that's going on. There will be a meeting probably on January 8th or 9th to be able to start going over the design plan. the design plans that are getting restarted. That project's been delayed for many years, waiting for funding to be worked out by Metro at the regional level, and they finally have, everything's done, it's gone through the state, and the monies are available now, and so the project is going to be moving into final design and construction over the next year or so. In process also is the Union Street Protected Cycle Track, or the Protected Cycle Bicycle Lane, that will be rebuilding all of the intersections along Union Street from Hill to Arroyo Parkway. Brand-new signals will be going in at all of those intersections, even the ones that are currently unsignalized, so that'll help with pedestrian crossings, as well as traffic operations in some of those areas. And then there will be a bicycle, a two-way bicycle lane going in, for those of you that are familiar with the project. That project has recently received environmental clearance from Caltrans and is moving into the design phases, and public meetings will start on that in the spring as we go past the year-end activities here. There are a couple of other projects that I can certainly answer questions on if people have want to think about them, but those are kind of the big ones right now. I did want to bring up two things, just to let you know, things that have already been in place, you may be aware of them, but we recently reinstituted Sunday service on Pasadena Transit. It's available Sunday mornings so people can get to church, and it runs into the evening the same way our Saturday service does. So, that's, we've been able to accomplish that through a grant that we've received from the Federal Transit Administration. On the parking front, you may hopefully have noticed this, that you can now use your cellphone to pay for your parking meters with using a program called Passport. If you're not familiar with it, check it out, it's on our website, or you can go to the Passport site and download the app. It's fairly straightforward, it allows you to use your cellphone, once you've linked it to your credit card, to pay for parking at any meter in the city of Pasadena. And lastly, on the parking front, I'm not going to talk at all about what David said I was going to talk about, but to let you know that we are going to be bringing before council on Monday night next, the recommendation for the vendor to replace the revenue and access control systems at the city's parking garages, which are sorely out of date, and then if you've been using the Passail lately, you know that it's very difficult sometimes to get in and out because the gates don't work very well. So, hopefully, that'll get approved, and we'll be able to move into replacing that equipment over the, starting then right after the first of the year, and moving mostly through 2019, by which time all of the garages would be updated with new systems. That system is intended to provide much more connectivity, be able to use Bluetooth and other types of activities to minimize the cash transactions and make it much more easy for people to use. So, hopefully, that will help with some of the parking issues in terms of the retail cores of the city. I'll turn it over to who's next, John.
Chief.
Thank you so much. And so, what I'll do is talk about the overall crime really quick and then get into right to the central service area. So, citywide, we've seen a decrease in 34% in the residential burglaries, 28% decrease in our commercial burglaries, and we've had 168 more thefts citywide this year than last year. This time of the year, we have to be careful with our packages. They're coming in at a higher frequency, they're landing on your porch, it's good to get them into the house as soon as you can, or have a neighbor pick them up if we can. Same with your mail, if you take off for a couple of days, having somebody bring your trash cans in, and making sure you pick the newspapers up off the driveway, those kinds of things are really important, so we want to make sure we do that. This year, we've had 24 more burglaries citywide than we did last year, so we're doing well on controlling crime, which is down between 5 and 7% this year as compared to last. Right into the central service area, we've had 1,000 burglary alarms in this area. However, only two of them were actual burglaries. One at the Sunglass Hut, and the other one at the Pasadena Auto Wash. That tells me that the alarms are working. We do have to make sure we're turning them on and that the activations are probably us leaving the home and maybe not locking something, so we have to make sure the area is secured, so we have to be careful with that. And so, we've had 27 residential burglaries in the area during the entire year, which is very positive, so we have to make sure that we stay on top of that. One of the ways to make sure we stay on top of the burglaries in our areas is making sure if you leave on vacation, you leave somewhere from the home, you're in contact with your residents, your neighbors there on the street. Wherever you live, you should know everybody on your block. You should be able to text someone. Everybody has cameras. Something suspicious happens, you're uncomfortable, you should have a neighbor check up on it for you, and you feel much better. Most of the time, it's a delivery person or leaving a note on the door, it's just good to know when that occurs. When we look at our burglaries, we've had 124 burglaries in this entire central service area. Again, we're talking from Los Robles over to Arroyo, and from California over to Union. And so, most of these are centered in Old Pasadena. We are doing surveillances and investigations, trying to figure out who's doing these. The majority of those, again, are in those structures and around the area around Old Pasadena. When it comes to traffic, we are doing higher enforcement along the 710 corridor, so we're trying to really slow people down. Many times, we get the request to do these type of enforcement activities, and then you'll respond back to us and says, "You're getting the wrong people. You gave me a citation." We have to make sure we stay on top of that to know that everybody is going to be looked at for their speed, so please, please stay aware of that. It is very helpful. When it comes to homeless, this is probably, as a council member spoke about, this is the number-one issue in the region. It's something that's not going to go away anytime soon. So, for our area, there was 250 homeless calls into the area. We do have an increase of transients not getting along, so if you see something like that, please call us. If you don't have our phone number, the dispatch center on your cellphones, you should, the 744-4241 number, put the area code, 626, in there, please, and put it into your cellphones so you have it anytime you could call. If you start with the asterisk, if you hit the asterisk, it'll be one of the first numbers that pops up on your cellphone, which is very important for us to get that information. So, of the homeless calls, we're looking for ways to actually track these better. Some calls come into dispatch, and we can't really track them as homeless because the issue might be a theft, some kind of event that happened at a store. And so, we're trying to find better ways to really identify how many homeless calls that we get, but I'm going to guess it's probably close to a third of what we do, and so we have to make sure that we try to figure out how to, for lack of a better word, condition our homeless to know what to do and what not to do. And that's going to be very, very important for us going forward. As I end this, I do want to talk about the fact that the city's homeless count was probably just under 700, and we deal with a chronic group of 50 to 75, probably, so a very small portion of the homeless group that we deal with are actually problematic. The rest are looking for shelter, looking for help, and we have our outreach teams that go out every day, and this year, they probably provided about 3,000 hours to outreach. They provided about 300 outreach services to individuals. We probably did between 30 and 50 cleanups in the different areas along, the Arroyo and other areas, so we're starting to stay, we're trying to stay on top of that. In summertime, we've created a neighborhood action team. They're learning more about how to help with the homeless issues, and this bicycle team is going to be a force multiplier for us, along with the Hope Team to get at the homeless issue for us. So, that's the information that I have to share. If there's questions, I can answer, I'll be happy to do that if necessary.
Thank you, Chief. And if I could just take this moment to let folks know, there are some empty seats up here in front. Don't be shy, if you want to come up and sit down, please do. Also want to acknowledge a couple more of our public safety folks who came in, Commander Moody.
Cheryl Moody is in the back there. She has the Patrol Division that really has the five lieutenants who do our service area policing, Cheryl.
Thank you.
And we got Chief Burt Washington as well from the Fire Department. He helps us on the public safety side. And we also have Pete Hadema, I think you're all familiar with Lieutenant Pete Hadema from the service area here, and so, I think that covers everybody.
Chief Frieders from the Fire Department as well.
Well, again, he likes to be introduced, this is his third time being introduced, so...
All right. Thank you very much.
No questions.
All right. We'll do the questions at the end, John. So, let me get through the agenda, and then we'll, yeah, thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Councilmember Madison. So, addressing homelessness, as Chief mentioned, is a very difficult, complex issue. So, for us, we have sort of a good news, bad news scenario, so let me share some of both with you. The good news is that last year, that's in 2017, we permanently housed 167 people. This is important because permanent housing is the only thing that ends homelessness. It's not a cod, it's not a sandwich. Those are important, and those are helpful, but if you want to end homelessness, you need to permanently house them. The bad news is that for every three persons we housed, five more homeless individuals showed up. And so, the homeless count last year was 677, and that is up 18% in one year. But interestingly, 75% of those are not chronically homeless, 75%. So, this implies that the vast majority of our homeless individuals, or people experiencing homelessness here, are experiencing homelessness because of economic reasons. They are not chronically homeless, which means they are not repeatedly homeless, homeless long-term, or have severe disabilities, mental health or physical health disabilities. That said, 68% of our homeless population is unsheltered, and that's pretty typical for Southern California. Two-thirds of the homeless population are unsheltered, meaning they're not living in one of our shelters or transitional housing facilities, but they are living out on the streets, under the bridges, in vehicles, et cetera. And 97 of those unsheltered homeless persons were in District 6. A troubling trend for us is that 37% of our homeless population, that's 253 persons, our largest homeless subpopulation, are older homeless individuals. These are 50 years old and over, and this is something that we are, this has been an increase of 65% over the last two years. And in the San Gabriel Valley, overall, the number of homeless seniors doubled in one year. And if you think about it, if somebody does not own, if a senior senior does not own their home, their housing price costs continue to escalate while their incomes likely are fixed, and there are little opportunities, if any, for them to increase their income. And so, more and more seniors are falling into homelessness, many for the very first time. So, this is a trend that is going in the wrong way and something that we'd like to address. On the good news front, there have been some state surplus budget dollars that have been allocated towards homelessness, homeless services, as well as the county quartson sales tax measure, Measure H, that was passed about a year and a half ago, and that is providing over $3 million of new funding to the city of Pasadena. Although, most of that, the state surplus money is one-time money, but it is still important money. So, what we plan to do with that money is to expand a number of programs that we already have going. So, one program is homeless prevention. It is better for us to prevent individuals, families, from falling into homelessness than to try to get them out after they've fallen into homelessness. So, homeless prevention is one thing. Motel vouchers are very important, so we're going to greatly expand our motel voucher program. This is because not, there's a good percentage of the homeless population that will not use traditional shelters. They're afraid of them, they can't bring their possessions in there, and they have no place to leave them. They cannot bring their pets in there, they cannot, if it's a family, and it's not a family shelter, then the family has to be separated, and they won't do that. So, providing motel vouchers is important because then we can get people off of the streets and into a motel where they can bring their things in there, where they can feel safe and have their own room, and have their family together, their pets in there, and then get connected to services and ultimately to permanent housing. So, motel vouchers are very important. We have another program that is called rapid rehousing, rapid rehousing, and this is to permanently house those folks who are not chronically homeless, those folks who either are working but can't afford a place to live, or have the ability to work but they're unemployed. So, we provide them with short-term rental assistance so that they can get on their feet and then get employed again, get some income again, and then be able to pay their own rent long-term. So, rapid rehousing program. And so, those are some of the things that we are doing. The point that I made about permanent housing as being really the only solution that ends homelessness points us to our biggest challenge right now, and that is that there is not enough permanent housing for individuals. So, you can send somebody into a shelter, but you have to have an exit there, otherwise people just keep, the shelters just all fill up, and folks are still homeless. So, finding permanent housing is a high priority for us. Siting permanent housing for homeless individuals is very, very difficult. But one thing I'd like to do is point folks to a video that you can find on YouTube, if you search YouTube and you go, you search Dorothy Edwards in Pasadena, Dorothy Edwards in Pasadena. Who was Dorothy Edwards? Dorothy Edwards was an extremely service-resistant, very, very, very chronic homeless, a drug addict here in Pasadena. Six years ago, the San Gabriel Valley Tribune did an 18-month video documentary on her, and what it showed was that when she was homeless, she camped on public property, she used drugs and alcohol in public, she panhandled, and she committed crimes. But six years ago, we got her housed, and in those six years, now she's not camping on public property, she's in an apartment here in Pasadena. She's not using drugs anymore, she's been clean and sober now for about five and a half years, and she's not panhandling because she's working part-time now. So, providing permanent housing for homeless individuals is a way to improve the quality of life. Everybody agrees, people should not be leaving out on the streets. The people who are living out on the streets agree, the people who live around there agree, the businesses agree, the elected officials agree, the staff agrees, nobody wants that. And the way to reduce the impact on quality of life is to house these individuals. I had a business owner ask me, who was concerned about a project that we proposed, said, "You know, what are you going to do if that, when one of the residents comes and camps on my sidewalk in front of my business?" And I said, "Well, that has never happened. They have their own apartment. Why would they come and camp in front of your business? It doesn't happen. Once they are permanently housed, they don't live and act like a unsheltered homeless person. If you are homeless, you need to find a place to stay, and they will find, and they do find places to stay. But once they are housed, they don't camp out on public property anymore. They don't, you know, do their business and impact quality of life in so many ways anymore because they have their own place now. They have their own bathrooms, they have their own kitchens, they have their own bed, they have their own place, and they have services that keep them housed. We have an over 90% success rate with individuals that we have housed here." So, to give you an example, we are very close to one permanent supportive housing project that we have here in Pasadena. Does anybody know where it is? It's right there on Euclid, it's right across the street from the ice skating rink, and it's been there since the '90s. When it was proposed, there was a lot of opposition, my property values, the business impacts, et cetera. None of that happened. So, it's been there, it houses over 50 individuals, including men, women, and children, their homelessness has ended there. And so, that's really our emphasis, that's what we're trying to push for, and we appreciate everybody's support and understanding. It's a difficult issue, but we'd like to work with communities to cite this kind of housing and really to improve the quality of life for those who are out on the streets and for all of us here in Pasadena. Thank you. Oh, and just two little things.
I'm hoping Bill will become passionate about his work at some point.
I did leave two things, two handouts. One is Pasadena Housing Department's frequently asked questions. It gives details about what is the Housing Department doing to address the affordable housing crisis, to address homelessness, to help low-income communities, and to help folks find jobs and start businesses. There's another handout for anyone who would like to volunteer for the upcoming Pasadena homeless count, and then there's a website, if you'd like to write this down, it's l-a-hop.org. And that is a website that you can go to to request a homeless outreach worker to come and check on somebody. So, you can report an individual, report their location, report their situation, and a homeless outreach worker will go there and will check on them. Doesn't mean that that person will agree to be housed right away, that doesn't often happen, but that's the beginning, is to get a homeless outreach worker there. So, it's l-a-h-o-p, hop.org. It's a smartphone app. Thank you.
Can you just, we're going to post it on our website, and I'm sure it'll be available. Can you give the date of the homeless count, the dates of the...
Yes, January 22nd and 23rd. It happens usually late at night and early in the morning.
Okay.
On a nice cold evening or morning. And the Bad Weather Shelter now is also open. The Bad Weather Shelter, we've had this Bad Weather Shelter in Pasadena for several decades. It's an anti-hypothermia program. It started because some homeless individuals here died, died of hypothermia here in Pasadena. But since the Bad Weather Shelter has been open, that has not happened in all the decades that it has been opened. So, it is open now, and it's weather-activated, so whenever the forecast, forecast cold weather and/or precipitation, like in the next couple nights, the Bad Weather Shelter will be open.
And I've volunteered there, probably many of you have as well, and the biggest takeaway I've had is how these look like families and people that I would see in the market or on the street, and most of them I would never know were homeless. So, it's a great thing to do that, so. Okay, Steve Mulheim, you're the cleanup hitter, as it were.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I'm Steve Mulheim.
I'm Steve Mulheim, President of Old Pasadena Management District. And I have a small, very passionate and dedicated staff, and together, we do our best to create a great destination environment for Old Pasadena and provide economic vitality for downtown. I've been in my position for about 13 years, and a lot of what we do, we are doing in partnership with the city and appreciate that, that partnership very much. It's the only way that we, we really get things, things done. Last year, we, we completed a strategic planning process. We met with a lot of our stakeholders, business owners, property owners, residents, commercial brokers, city staff, to put together an idea of what people really saw as a vision, what they saw as challenges, and how we might be able to address some of those issues and, and realize some of the opportunities. Well, I'll, we'll catch up at some point if we, we come online, but I'll walk through, you know, some of the, the key things that we found through our stakeholders was really looking at public space activation. The, the consultants that we used work all over the country, and they said, you know, one of the greatest opportunities you have are the network of alleys that run through Old Pasadena and connect a lot of those areas. That's something that just doesn't exist anywhere in the country. In fact, they looked at Europe to find examples of how we might be able to, to better utilize that. So the, we're focusing on side streets and alleys and how we can improve those areas. We have done a number of improvements to an area people may or may not know as Big Bang Theory Way, the area above ground where the, the gold line goes underneath. We worked with the city to create improvements there, to bring some landscaping in. We hung café lighting above. It's now a really great space for events. We've held a number of events there. Just a few weeks ago, we had a salsa band and about 1,500 people that were in the alley dancing salsa. It was, you know, people from little kids to older folks. It was really a great evening and a great use of that space. Looking at Central and Memorial Park and how we can activate those spaces through some of the activities that the city programs, as well as some additional things that, that we can do through, through events. We have a couple of events that we're even partnering with the city on to activate the parks. And while we certainly work with Bill's department and with the HOPE team from the Police Department in trying to mitigate some of the effects of the, the homeless population that we have, one of the most effective things that we can do is bring positive activity into that same area. So looking at, at how we can improve that. We are, we're working on connectivity and walkability throughout the area. One of the things that we try to do is provide a great tree canopy throughout Old Pasadena. We actually--
If I can get to the desktop, I may be able to get both monitors.
Okay.
They'll come in in a few.
Okay.
I'm waiting for the PSAB guy to come in.
All right. So we actually, where trees need to be replaced in Old Pasadena along the sidewalks, we partner with Pasadena Beautiful to replace those trees with larger specimens than what the city's able to. So we're actually putting in 24-inch, 36-inch box trees to be able to start with the mortuary canopy. We are looking at where we can add additional lighting. We're working now with some of our property owners on where we can add murals in to create streetscapes and interest. And we're also looking at mid-block crossings, particularly along the legs of the, the right-of-way, where people are kind of naturally walking that, and now they're, they're just jaywalking across the street, which in some cases is pretty dangerous. How we can get mid-block crossings into there so they can cross naturally. Also looking at a mid-block crossing from the Memorial Park garage to, from the Marriott Garage to Memorial Park. You know, we missed this last summer, but on normal basis, we have concerts at that bandshell all summer long. And so we've got families just jaywalking across Raymond Avenue all, all summer, and we, we want to make that a safer place as well. Some of the, one of the other pieces that were, this is great. So some of the other pieces that we're looking at is community events and how we can activate from public right-of-way space. Yeah, thanks. Perfect. So the, for, we're working on community-driven events, like the Yappy Hour, which is a happy hour with, you can bring your dog. So we've been doing that in some of the alleyways. There's actually some materials at the desk back there about Yappy Hour. Bold Pass is an event we started a couple of years ago. It's a one-day event. It brings different-sized art installations into the different alleyways around Old Pasadena. So it's a leisurely day of being able to walk around, see some really innovative art installations. Some of them are very professional, some of them are students. But that, along with the public art, it really makes a nice day of being able to, to walk around and see all of, of that. I'm just going to wing it, I think, at this point. The Day of the Dead event is another thing that we do. All of the stores create an altar experience for Day of the Dead. You can walk around to the various stores and see that. The salsa in the alley, that was a part of that event. And also Summer Cinema is an event that we partner with a number of stores and the Courtyard at One Colorado, and we show movies outdoors or in unusual locations. This coming year, we actually are partnering with Parks and Rec from the city to expand that program even further and be able to show more movies in the park as well. One of the things that was, that came up that was really important to, to a lot of our stakeholders was maintaining our independent tenant mix. You know, we don't own any of the property, so we're not involved in the brokering. We do try to make love matches where we can. But one of the things that has really helped us maintain our strength as retail has, has met some challenges is the fact that 70% of our businesses in Old Pasadena are independent small-business local owners. A lot of people, if you're just looking at Colorado Boulevard, you see a lot of national tenants. And, you know, they may walk away thinking that that's what Old Pasadena is, but the predominant amount of, of our businesses are small businesses that are here local. And that has really helped us maintain our strength economically, is they're only in one place. So to visit those businesses, you've got to come to Pasadena. You don't find them online, you're having an experience in their stores. They're creating very special experiences. And in supporting those types of businesses, we're not even just supporting that one local business owner, but those business owners are going out and finding local artisan-driven goods. So we're also supporting local artists who are working with those store owners. So it really does help to, to maintain the, the local economy when we're, we're supporting the small-business stores, and it's helping us maintain our sense of destination. So we're, we're working with a lot of our property owners, we're creating wish lists, we're trying to make matches as best we can to help maintain that independent mix. One of the things that we heard is a real challenge as we were looking through this was parking. We work really closely with the city's parking department. I don't think it's quite as big a challenge as many people think that it is. You might not find a space right in front of the store that you want to go to, but in most cases, you will walk a shorter distance than if you parked in the mall parking lot, walked to the, the mall entrance, and then walked to the store that you needed to get to inside of the, the mall. Fred had mentioned that we're, we're working with the city on upgrading a lot of our technology. The, the parking meter app has been hugely successful. There is also some information about that at Taka's table as well, if you, you need to know about that. We're also working with, through the Parking Meter Commission to get the ability to use credit cards at the meters. That's a little ways off, but in the meantime, we have the, the app to help. Also working with them on strategizing the curb space. How can we really use the curb space as best as possible? How can we use the loading zones for a couple of different things? Maybe their loading zones until 6:00 PM, and then they can be parking after that. Some of the loading zones are being converted now to spaces set aside for Lyft and Uber, because we're certainly seeing Lyft and Uber take a, a lot more usage within the, the area. So how can we better accommodate them? We also partner with the, the city in overseeing the management of several of the parking garages that, that they own. So the Marriott Garage, the Schoolhouse Garage, and the Garage on DeLacy, we partner in overseeing that. Working on maybe taking some ownership of the Holly Street and Delmar garages as well. We'd love to give some love there. And a couple of the challenges that have come up recently, Steve mentioned that as well, the marijuana dispensaries. We're working with the city and advocating for some parameters on that. You know, some of them are really beautiful. I don't care how beautiful they are. Tiffany's doesn't want to be three doors down from one. So, you know, we have seen some best practices in some other cities where maybe they're located in upper floors or in the back of house, so that they're there and they're doing great business and they're raising tax revenue, but they're not as visible and they don't create as much of a challenge for tenancy. Certainly, we expect to have some challenges with the, the new issues with street vending, and the city's doing a great job of jumping on that. The state really gave us very little time to address that. But it worked, well, that'll be an ongoing issue of trying to, I, I think, soften those edges. And then, you know, lastly, certainly one of the things that we work with is, is trying to mitigate the ability for us to do business and create a great space for our residents and work with our homeless population. A couple of years ago, we actually hired a full-time homeless outreach specialist to help us with addressing that population and do everything that we can to get those folks into services. And we work a lot with Bill's team and with the HOPE team through the Police Department and Union Station Foundation to get them as quickly as possible. But I, I do want, as the only kind of non-city person that, that's up here, I do want to just take a moment to say how much our organization and our stakeholders appreciate the partnership with the city. We could not get done half of what we do without that partnership and their hard work. So it, it means a lot to have such a great team to be able to, to work with. So thanks to the, the city and to Steve. Thank you.
I feel like you passed a test with giving your presentation there without the AV support, but I apologize for that. So those are the presentations. There's just so much that was raised there, you know? I think on the homeless issue, I, both Steve and Bill and others, the chief addressed that, you know? I do think we want to be a great city. We are a great city. And to have, you know, a high incidence of homelessness, and especially, I talk to Bill all the time about the, the service-resistant, deeply mentally ill, chronic drug abuse and substance abuse, that I think those tend to be the more problematic, in some ways, individuals, because they really do undermine the, the commerce that we're trying to promote in, in Old Pasadena, for example. It occupies public safety dollars and time and resources that we, we ought not to occupy. You know, in downtown LA, there are large parts of that city that they've almost thrown in the towel, it seems. I mean, piles of garbage and tents and people living in conditions that you would think, you know, we're in a third-world country, not in, not in the United States with all of our resources. So in terms of transportation, you know, we could talk about things like the Colorado Street Bridge, where I'm told very soon we'll have a proposal and a plan to actually address the tragic issue of suicides. And I know you all know that we have the temporary chain-link fencing there, which is not particularly appealing visually or consistent with the history, but at some point, I applaud the city manager's decision to elevate human safety in the short term, and then to come up with a plan and the resources to be able to, to address that. I do think, you know, we're, we're dealing with scooters potentially. I think they're coming, you know? They have these new scooters that people can ride and then just drop, and they sort of get used that way, or I guess they get picked up early in the morning and taken back to locations or what have you. We're looking at that. The bike thing, I might start maybe our questions, Fred, by asking you about the, the bike program that was not successful. Remember the, we set aside these swathes of street parking, we took away parking to put in these bicycles with the thought being that people would be drawn to, you know, using those for a small rental fee. And the city lost a couple of million bucks on that, and it was all grant money, as I understand, so we're not really out of pocket in terms of our general fund, but I'd love your take on that issue, Fred.
Oh, well, thank you for a hard one there.
Success stories, you know?
Right, yeah. It's one of those learnings you go, I think the, the key was the city had been looking to try to support a bike-share program as we went along, and rather than, after we'd done all of our research and we're moving in one direction, Metro came up with a regional bike-share program, and, and that seemed to be an effective way of beginning to sort of distribute cost over the region to be able to afford it. We were then elected to sign on as Metro's first outside of the city of Los Angeles node, and they assisted us through that with some grants. We did put in some local match, so the city is out some staff time and not too many hundreds of thousands of dollars of actual local funds for all of the, the money that was spent on the project, so most of it came out of Metro. But what effectively happened is, is that we went into the program and, and talked to council about it as a two-year pilot, and we elected to fund it completely, not on the basis that there would be any revenue return on it. So that's how we were able to get through the program as long as we did. But in essence, what happened is, is that Metro had proposed to defer the, some of the costs by bringing sponsors into the program, and during the two years that Pasadena participated, none of the sponsorships materialized. So as a consequence, the, the monthly operating costs of the program never reached a level that we could afford to sustain, and that's why we made the recommendation to pull out of it in the, the near term here. Since then, we've been looking at dockless programs for bicycles, which are still evolving at this point. A couple of companies have actually come and gone during the time that, that we've been looking at this. Those may eventually work out to be the best, depending on how a bike-share could operate in the city. Obviously, scooters are continuing to be an issue. They're showing up in East Pasadena and the county areas at this point, and are kind of migrating into the city. Currently, if they're parked on the sidewalks and are abandoned on the sidewalks, basically Public Works is confiscating them. So those are things that are still evolving as we go forward. The staff is, is looking very carefully at what other cities are doing to try to effectively manage those types of shared-use mobility devices in a way that, that don't overwhelm operations on either the sidewalk or, and be able to, safety on the streets, essentially.
Yeah, I think LA has pulled some of those, too. I don't think they have the same inventory even in LA of those bike shares, so. All right, so let's start with your question.
Well, at the moment, we're working on a, one of the projects I did mention is the East-West Union Street Protected Cycle, Protected Bicycle Lanes, basically. But that's a separated two-way cycle track that will provide buffered movement as well as traffic signalization for the bicycle movements along Union Street. The other streets, Cordova will have a buffered bike lane going into it. And as the city implements new bicycle lanes under the Bicycle Master Plan, those lanes are also being implemented with buffers to, to separate them from the door zones and from, provide a little bit more space from the moving traffic. So that's the, in essence, the direction that the overall bicycle program is, is working. The other piece is then to continue to identify and sign the network of roadways, which are low-stress bicycling routes. They're shared space, but they're on low-speed streets and low-volume streets, and the idea is to continue to build that network up so that there are accessible routes around the city for people of different cycling abilities and comfort levels.
Okay, yes, sir. Do you want to respond, chief? I don't, I don't necessarily agree with the liability issue. I also don't think that's the most important issue. I think the most important thing is, is safety, and, yeah, people, everyone seems to be in such a hurry these days.
We do want to try to get everywhere to sign everybody. It's hard to get there. We had 3,500 citations that were written over this past year in the area. That's probably not enough. It's a balance of trying to educate people on how to drive and getting to the people that run those red lights. Those are frustrating for us as well. We do need to get there, so I appreciate the comment, and we do the best that we can with the resources that we do have. But we try to move our enforcement around the entire city with 300 miles of streets, and a city that's very desirous. People come from all over, and they do enjoy, enjoy the city, and I don't think they appreciate-- People come from all over, and they do enjoy the city, and I don't think they appreciate the rules that we have. When you live here, work here, or come here, you know, we appreciate it. Sometimes we have visitors, I think, that come through and don't respect that. So we'll do a better job if we can. I think we're doing a very good job. We just don't have as many resources as we always want to enforce red light violations or other type of traffic violations. So thank you for that.
The question is about, I think you're talking about photo cameras for red light violators. And actually, in California, those were invalidated by the courts. They were found to not be--
They became administrative citations.
Acceptable.
Yeah, so you could pay if you wanted to for the violation.
I think we had some of them, Fred, and we took them out when the court rulings came down.
Yep.
Yeah, so, okay, other questions? Yes?
Certainly, I can certainly. The dockless is something that we've been discussing with municipal services. It's on a, we're moving slowly at this point. There's some, lots of concern about the issue of dockless mobility in the city. I think that if that's something that you're interested in, it'd be helpful to get your viewpoint known there. But the, we have been having conversations with those firms that are still operating and trying to work out a way that we can get the, modify the city's rules and regulations that would allow them to operate. Currently, they're not permitted under the city's statutory use of the right-of-way on the, not so much for using the bicycles, but for parking them in public right-of-way. And that's the, they're, where council would need to make a change in the municipal code to allow them to operate, and that's why we're having the conversation with the council committees. So it's probably a slow go at this point. It'd be more like sometime later this next spring, we'll be coming back with the next iteration of state-of-the-art and what other regulations are being used successfully around the country. That's our charge at the moment. Well, we can certainly notify you when that's going on, if you can, if you want to leave me your name. So, and we also inform the council office when those things are going on. So the BRT that's the Canojo de Pasadena is a project that was funded through Major M. It's one of the Major M regional projects that Metro is doing. And if you have or haven't been paying attention, there are public meetings going on around the region. We've had one recently in Pasadena here. There will be more coming on as Metro starts moving through the development of the design for that process. What hasn't been worked out to date is the overall route. They have several routes that are being looked at. Some go by the airport in Burbank, some don't. Many of the route connections basically are, whether or not it's a freeway-running, be a bus rapid transit service, or whether it's one that works more on surface streets like Colorado Boulevard, Figueroa, some of those, to be able to reach different markets within the area. That's the work that's going on right now in terms of Metro planning. As they begin to settle in on a route, they're working with the cities to try to understand what impacts there might be to where the bus rapid transit operates through the city, whether it operates in mixed traffic, whether they're going to want to request some sort of dedicated lanes. Those are all part of the planning process that will be going on right now. So I would encourage you all to stay tuned and to watch the websites. We'll be bringing in information forward as we get it, obviously try to keep it up in front of council so they're aware of it. But Metro's project website is probably the best source of information on that, and we can get that link to the council office for posting.
I am correct, though, right, Fred, that there's a new line extending northward, I think, from downtown, or maybe off of the red line up into that area of North Hollywood? Because I sit on the Airport Commission for Burbank, and we've been looking at potentially a high-speed rail station, right, adjacent to the airport. We're actually very nervous about that because we're not sure that's ever going to happen, and we don't want the plans to build the new replacement terminal at Burbank to be caught up in environmental studies and the like for a project that may never happen. But I know that project would have a high-speed rail that would stop at the Burbank Airport and then go downtown. There might be one stop in between, or maybe not. It would go right to Union Station. I've been advocating for a long time to extend the gold line east from the point in Pasadena here where it turns west, use the 134 median and take us to Burbank Airport that way on light rail. There's no reason we shouldn't be able to go to the airport on light rail, but so far, that's not a project that's on Metro's list, so.
I think the BRT is their first attempt to try to develop a market along those ways.
Buses are extremely important, so that's fair enough. Yes, Myra?
And it's hard to say. I think that's something that, to date, we've been working, not just Transportation Department, but Public Works, Police Department, City Attorney's Department, with the City Manager's Office, to work with council to make sure that Pasadena is prepared for this. We've all now, right now, currently coordinating with Supervisor Barker's office. Because the scooter companies have elected to drop their devices in the county areas, they're overlapping into Pasadena. But to date, we've been able to be successful in limiting their use in Pasadena, or at least particularly leaving them on the sidewalk or in the public right-of-way in Pasadena. It's legal to ride a scooter on the streets of California, and so those are things that we, as the city, don't have control over, but we do have the ability to enforce helmet laws. We have those things, and those are where PD is very important in their pursuit of that. Riding and operating on the sidewalk is a similar, not allowed, and those are things that also require enforcement. For the longer term, we just have to assume that the scooter, should it remain, is a popular type of local mobility device, and we would expect to see them coming into Pasadena. And so on that end, we're working with the council to develop a set of rules and regulations that give us the, sort of the next level of authority to be able to have an effective management of them as opposed to just simply a prohibition. We're right now at a point where we just prohibit them, basically, and that's what--
Would the responsibility for the management, the monitoring of this situation fall on your office?
It's a combination--
Or the new office developed for this?
Hadn't thought of that one. That'd be great. Let somebody else deal with it, yeah. Actually, it's a combination. It's, again, this sort of a three-pronged approach, is that transportation is the department working right now most closely with the city attorney to develop the rules and regulations. The part of the municipal code that those rules and regulations go in tends to be enforced by code compliance and other portions of the Public Works Department. That's since they're essentially tasked with keeping the public right-of-way clear. But then the operation of scooters and the person when they're operating it, they're a vehicle, and they're operating a vehicle, and that really then falls under PD's purview. So we have to have this sort of three-part platform that we all work together, just the same way we do when we're dealing with vehicle traffic on the streets, to be able to effectively operate it. And that's how we currently operate that. Transportation deals with sort of planning and operations. Public Works deals with installing and maintaining, and PD deals with enforcement. And so we coordinate on that already. The scooter just happens to be a new kind of device that's coming in, and we have to basically adopt or amend our regulations to be effective and swift-moving enough to be able to keep up with this disruptive type of technology.
Yeah, there are no silos that I'm aware of in City Hall. And it's after eight, so I want to be faithful to our commitment in terms of that. I do want to thank Pasadena Media for doing the various technology, trying to steer away from the AV equipment, which I don't think was Pasadena Media. I think that was the convention center here, and I do want to thank the Pasadena Center Operating Company. I really want to thank these panelists who work all day and then come and do this for us. Thank you.